I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Thank you. Kristen, if you would do the honors of the introduction, please.
Really? So this is Kristen Powers and just so everybody is aware, you did. There was a little announcement this evening, but this meeting is being recorded and will be submitted to PEG TV. So friendly reminder to address all questions and comments to Mike Beecher, the Chair of our Board. Also to please announce yourself and your name before speaking so that we may all know who you are for those of us who might not be here in person this evening. So members in attendance this evening, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Jessica Van Orte, and Rich Hewlett, which is a quorum. Should Bob Jones enter the room, I'll let everybody know. Others in attendance, we have Kristen Powers, Keith Mason, Chuck Whedon, Jennifer Sullivan, Maureen Brown, Harley Cudney, Collins Debeal, Dan Brooks, Julie Mack, Ruth Lampy or Lampy, sorry, I hope I'm pronouncing your name okay, Ruth, Rhonda Schlangen, and if anybody has a different name that or other people who are with them that they'd like to have added to the attendance list, please feel free to send a message to me in the chat feature and I will add you up. And it looks like Bob Jones is, Bob Jones has entered the building, so he'll be here in a moment. And that is our introduction.
Excellent. Addition or deletion?
Well, Kristen here again, one addition, the board should need to enter executive session this evening to discuss employee labor relations agreements. That was a request made by our Chair. So Mike, I'm not sure when you'd like.
New business at the end of the meeting will be fine.
Sounds good. I think that's the only other formal addition. There are some things that the board needs to discuss regarding use of the Town Hall Auditorium. There have been a few questions that have come up. I know that Deb has that in the Town Clerk's memo, so I think that can be discussed within then. And otherwise I will bring that up during new business.
Okay, that sounds good. How about the approval of the minutes? What did everybody think of the minutes that we were all able to see?
It seemed fine to me. This is Jessica. I'll move we approve the minutes.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Don will second.
Don will second that. All in favor of the minutes? Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Pre-requested? Anything pre-requested? Nothing, huh? Well, that's good.
Nothing pre-requested.
Announcements?
So this is Kristen. There's one announcement. There will be a COVID-19 vaccination clinic on Friday, June 11th from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Polit Fire Department located on 155 Vermont Route 133. The Vermont Department of Health will be administering the single-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine and adults age 18 years and older are eligible to be vaccinated at this clinic. So this has been announced last week, I believe it went out, but just so everybody is aware, so please spread the news and there's no fee, there's no preregistration, there's no insurance necessary. So if you have any other questions, you can contact myself or any other folks around town and people will be able to provide guidance.
Hey, great. And to reports? Is there anything from Jonas, the zoning administrator this week? No, nothing this week.
Kristen, nothing that I've received, Mike, no.
Okay, Kristen. So now Planning Commission report.
Jessica, would you like that? Yes. This is Jessica putting on my hat as Planning Commission Chair. I sent over a report earlier this, earlier today, and I'll just sort of summarize it here. Not particularly long. The Planning Commission met last week, Monday. We continue to work on edits to the Enhanced Energy Plan. One thing of note that we came across, since we're editing it and it was made in 2019 and, you know, it suffered a few delays, we've discovered that there's a few of our goals that were in there for 2022 that we've already met as a town. One of them being that we are now use, there are more heat pumps in our town being used than we had as our goal for 2022. So good job us moving toward our energy goals that we're already surpassing. We anticipate about two more meetings worth of working on these edits. And then the next step for the Enhanced Energy Plan will be to go to a public hearing for the Planning Commission. The best of the time we spent, we sort of returned to the project that the Planning Commission was working on last summer. We've done before, before three of us who are now on it were on it, so we had to do a little bit of asking about the institutional memory of what was being worked on at the time, but we are considering the conditional uses in the zoning bylaws. If they are all appropriate to the zoning districts that they're in, if some of them should be moved around or changed, perhaps a few that are very similar should be consolidated. So we started back on that work again. We were, we did consider the Contractors Yard, which Gary has been, has been keen to consider. So we looked at that and some similar industries. And next time we're going to be picking up the topic, which appears across a lot of the zoning districts, that there are certain sorts of shops or industries that currently in the zoning requires the person who owns it to live on site. And there are other industries and shops that don't require that. So we're kind of looking into that, asking ourselves, is this something that is necessary for Polit zoning to have the person live on site? And the sense of the current Planning Commission seems to be that making this requirement is somewhat onerous for some folks in Polit who own businesses and may wish to have a shop on a different lot than the lot that they own and live on. So we're going to be reconsidering that with an eye to the, to the economic development of Polit. So that's it for my Planning Commission report. I do have an additional report, which isn't exactly Planning Commission, but it's a, it comes from speaking with Jonas. And it's about the bylaws. So I don't know if I should give that report right now or wait until later.
I, I would think go right in as long as it's zoning and planning, all kinds of balled up together, right?
Sure. So I'll, I'll continue with that. Alright, so I have these dates written down. So Jonas and I were working since we voted on April 20 to approve the new version of the bylaws. He and I have been gathering the required required documentation to send to the state to make sure that we get made into a 10-acre town instead of a one-acre town, and we ran into a snag. So I will tell you what went wrong and what we need to do. And it's unfortunate that this happened, but luckily it's not the fault of anybody on this call. Or anybody in the Town of Polit. So our, our, we met as a Select Board on April 23 and we determined that the public hearing for the bylaws would be March 23. And we determined that the public hearing would be on April 20. So that was about a month later. So then that Thursday, March 25, Deb sent out the notice to the Lakes Free Press, which she copied me on, so I have all this, asking them to print it in next week's paper. That would have been June the 2nd. That would have been 19 days before the hearing. It has to be at least 15 days before. So we would have been in plenty of time. Instead of printing our notice on June the 2nd, the Lakes Free Press waited an additional week and printed it on June the 9th. This was only 12 days before our hearing. So Jonas was asking Rutland Regional Planning Commission if this was still going to be okay, since everything else was done correctly, if this hearing coming out three days later than it should have will be a deal breaker. And they got back to him and they said, yes, the hearing is invalid because the paper did not print the, um, the notice on time. So, and the date that the, the Lakes Free Press's policy is that their cutoff is the Thursday of the week prior. So the date that Deb sent it in, the 25th, she did it correctly, that should have been the final date to send things in to be in the paper on June the 2nd. I don't know why the Lakes Free Press didn't print it the day they were told to. But that has made a problem for us. So I wanted to report that to the Select Board and see what we want to do about it.
So going, if I understand quite right what you just explained, what we need to do to move forward would be to warn the hearing again, have the hearing and then vote on it again, because even the vote itself is null and void because it wasn't properly warned.
That's what I understand, yes. And that seems to be what Rutland Regional Planning Commission is telling us. Jonas's suggestion is that going ahead in the future, we might want to reconsider using the Lakes Free Press as our paper of record and think of moving to the Rutland Herald because they run more than once a week and they don't make you get things in two weeks ahead of time, as this seems to be the case in order to run things. So that, that was what he suggested to me, and so I'm passing that along to us.
Okay, that, it seems like this has been a problem trying to make that all work out a time or two before in, in history, so. I, I think that we need to just start the whole process of the, the warning and, and do it again. Unfortunately, it wastes a lot of time.
And it wastes money. I wonder if the Lakes Free Press will run it free for us because they didn't run it on time last time.
I would think we should certainly pressure them for that because it was their failure that created all this extra work for us. So.
And again, this is Jessica again. Honestly, Jonas and I didn't know that it had run a week late until we went to go find the clipping. Right? And then we looked in the, on June 2nd and didn't find it and we said, what's going on? So we looked a week later and then we found it there. So, so I, I mean, whoever our contact is at the Lakes Free Press also didn't tell us, I guess. I mean, we could double check with Deb if she got any further communication from them, but I doubt it. My suggestion might be, sorry, sorry, Mike. I was just saying maybe we should schedule our hearing two months out or six weeks, just to be sure that we get the newspaper thing in, in time for the 15 days.
I would say that would be a good, a wise idea. Give us a, a little bit of a buffer zone. Because the, it can come out earlier than 15 days. It just can't come out later than 15 days, right?
Correct.
Okay, so. I mean, I would say, I would say that, that, uh, that we should just try and push that again. What does the rest of the board feel like? July 13th is the day that would, would give us ample time to, that would be a month away. I believe, or I just saw that note. Is that from you, Kristen?
This is Kristen. Yeah, I'm just looking at the calendar so that we can all, if I can coming up with our upcoming meeting schedule here. So just posing available dates.
Mike, this is Rich and I think that would be fine.
Okay, so Rich, round to put that in form of a motion that will, well, what dates, what day do we want to pick and to give us ample time to, to get it all out? Would that be three meetings from now?
Yeah, this is Jessica. I would think that the July, July the 13th, which would be three meetings from now, would be the best time to hold that hearing to give us sufficient lead at time. So I guess I'll put that in the form of a motion. I move that we hold the public hearing for the bylaws on July the 13th.
And that's a second from you, Rich?
Yeah, this is Rich. I'll second that.
Okay, because he was on board too. So any more discussion? We'll, we'll just roll right through this again. We won't even have to talk about him this time probably unless somebody has a question. So, okay. All in favor, Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Carrie? Anything else? Anybody have any questions for the Planning Commission?
I just have a quick question, Mike.
Yes.
Wondering if there's anything that I need to do to support this motion. Would you like me to edit the dates of the last warning and resubmit that or am I just an extra spoke in the wheel? Does somebody else already have?
No, I think, I think that would be, that would be ensure that everything is, is correct. We could get that information to Deb as soon as possible and and to the paper and see if they're, if they want to stand behind their mistake and, and make good on it.
Okay, so I will re, I will re, or redo that and send it along to Deb, Jessica and Jonas. I will copy you two. I know Jonas is not here so that everybody knows about it and we will make sure that everything happens. So, very good.
Thank you. All right. Is there nothing else for the Planning Commission? We'll move on to the road foreman's report.
Hi, everybody. This is Keith. Uh, just ongoing down on the Herick Road. Minor, other than a few minor storm cleanups, that's where we've been. It's going well. We changed plans midstream a little bit there because we, one of the banks we had to dig back was all gravel, so we hauled that all to the gravel pit and rebuilt it back with the waste soil that we had from the job site. So we did 100 loads of gravel to the gravel pit last week. So, um, we can, it's piled there so we can crush it at a later date or whatever, whatever works out. But it was, um, too nice just to haul away and get rid of. So, um, that kind of slowed us down a little, but it sped us up when we got ready to, to move the onsite fill and we were able to use that right there. Um, Rich, we probably are going to be ready for seed later this week, Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so just a heads up that we may be looking for, uh, uh, Rick is, Rick Bro is delivered us some round bales. That's still all that I found, but I think he has 13 of them and we probably will put them on and see how far they go and make an adjustment from there.
Well, I'll have a tractor and a round bale chopper ready for you.
Okay, and I'll firm that up with you as the week goes on here, but that's, that's what it's looking like. And so the next phase will be the culverts and then we're ready to put the rock down. So my guess would be culverts next week and maybe even get started putting some rock down by then. So. So we're on schedule to meet our substantial completion by the end of June anyway, so.
Good deal.
Um, any new info on the truck, Rich?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I, I talked with a guy from Auctions International. His name is Dave. I got to meet with him on Thursday. What they do is online auctions and he's going to take a look at the truck, take some pictures if, if we choose to do so with, or work with him. And he's, he can also do property. So, um, you know, that's another conversation, but with the truck, I'll find out what percentage he's going to get to do an online auction with that. And that may be the, the way to do it with that truck.
Okay, and so that's good. Makes sense to me. The only other thing is, um, Jessica, any new word on, uh, our Wi-Fi sign for West Polit?
Uh, this is Jessica. Um, Keith, I do have the design pretty much ready, which I will send to you as soon as possible.
Okay, I, I just hadn't seen it and sometimes that's, that fault is on my end. So that's the only reason that I was asking, so.
No, good. Thank, thank you for reminding me. I, I do, I do have that file in my computer somewhere, so I'll, I'll pull that up tomorrow and have a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and that's about all I have, Mike.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Keith? Okay, all sounds good, Keith. I'm glad everything's going well on that. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Assessors' report? Is there anything from the assessor's office? No. John, do you have anything to share regarding the assessors?
I do not. I took, called the office today and realized, of course, it's Tuesday and that, not a day that Karen works.
Okay, thank you. Guess we're down to the Town Clerk's memo.
Yes, this is Kristen. And Deb is not attending the meeting this evening, so I would be happy to share her report for today's meeting, June 1st, 2021. Waiting to hear from Vinnie Covino with regard to the replacement of the Town Clerk computer. He is also recommending the replacement of some outdated backup batteries. Research requests are picking up again. For now, we are still requiring masks to come into the office. Most of our business is being conducted on the porch, i.e. notary, registration renewals, dog license, et cetera. Likely going to stick with appointments for research requests. It works much better for the office flow to have only one researcher at a time. We will keep the designated research area set up as that seems to be working very well. Photocopier is and has been in the main room, which allows for easy access to researchers and all office staff. Remember to address the library usage request for the auditorium, which includes the serving of alcoholic beverages as provided by the barn restaurant. It has been passed in legislature that general election ballots will continue to be mailed to 100% of registered voters. Does not apply to the primary election. Many other COVID provisions made for 2020 elections have also been carried over and have been approved in legislation allowing for outdoor voting, drive-up, drive slash through voting, processing early voted ballots within the 30 days prior to the election, et cetera. It is up to each municipality to determine whether or not to do 100% mailings for the town meetings. We did not opt for this in March and I believe we would keep things as they are for town meeting. Therefore, early voting ballots would have to be requested by the voter. Thank you and have a good evening, Deb.
Okay, anybody have any questions about Deb's report tonight?
Just the, um, the library age, the auditorium usage. Did everybody on the board have a chance to see that?
Okay, that was what, a week or two ago that the library wants to have a fundraiser and they want to have either the State Barn or the station provide alcoholic beverages at this event, correct?
Yeah, so it's actually, this is Kristen. Um, it's actually a series of events. Um, so it looks like the Polit Library is requesting to do a coffee house type of series of events in the auditorium. So the event dates, there's one August 14th. Um, so there's August 14th, October 30th, November 29th, I think, or 7th, um, December 12th, and that's all for now. And so these events would be taking place, there are musical guests, which sounds lovely, and the barn restaurant would be hosting or providing the alcohol. So the reason why that part needs special approval or acknowledgement is because in the auditorium rental agreement contract, it states that no alcohol is allowed to be served on the premises unless the Select Board approves of it. And the Select Board is also the liquor control group as well. So, so many hats. Um, so anyway, there's one of the events that does not have alcohol, I think because maybe, I think the reason was maybe it's in the morning or something. Um, but anyway. That's that. If I, if memory serves, Bob might have already signed off on these when he was there last time. Um, but then there was a moment in between last meeting and tonight when I realized that the board hasn't actually seen those agreements. Um, so I wanted to be sure that everybody talked about those.
Does anybody on the board have any problem with, with allowing the, the barn restaurant to serve alcohol at these events? When the barn caters at a, at a function such as this, everything to do with the alcohol would be under their liability insurance?
This is Jessica. Seems fine to me. At the most recent Connectors gathering that we had, um, we heard a little bit about these events that the library wants to do and they sound like they'll be really enjoyable and something that will, um, draw people together in our town. So, yeah, I'm all for it.
Is that in the form of a motion to allow the, them to have the?
Sure. Yes, it is. This is Jessica. I move that we allow them to serve alcohol at these events.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Don will second.
Don will second that motion. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, passed. Thank you. Anything else on the Town Clerk's memo?
I think that's not.
Okay. Town Treasurer's memo. Julie?
Hello, this is Julie. Um, two warrants to be signed today. The payroll for the week was $8,909.02. Accounts payable was $38,580.19. Um, and that includes the credit card that you authorized me to pay in between meetings. Um, monies from the general fund were $22,968.10. Highway was $19,672.06. Wastewater was $48,490.5. And on that, the wastewater money market is insufficient to cover the expenses this week and we need to do a transfer from savings. I didn't know if we wanted to have, well, I guess we should have a discussion about that. We, I've done several, I've had to do several transfers at this point and we're close to closing the wastewater tax collection year. It's June 10th is the due date. We have about 30,000 outstanding on collection and we generally have a um, delinquency that's in the $20,000 range. So I'm not expecting to collect enough by June 10th to cover, I would need to cover June, July, August and possibly even September, depending on when our first collection is in the next year. So I don't know if you want to just, um, transfer what we need to now and then just play it by year and we'll keep doing small transfers as we go as needed? Or what your thought would be on that?
Okay, how much did our budget go up for next year? Because we'll be going into a new fiscal year after this month, Greg, too. Right?
Yeah, we will be going into a new fiscal year. Um, our budget, total budget for '22, it was like $9,500 more, about $10,000 more.
Right now, we're about $11,000 under what we need.
Um, this is Jessica. And it isn't an immediate solution, but it occurs to me that that's one of the allowed uses for the ARPA, the American Recovery Plan Act funds we're going to be getting. One of the absolutely approved uses is to fill budget shortfalls that happened because of COVID. And if last year we had 10,000 more in delinquencies than usual, I think we could easily chalk that up to people's situations during COVID.
Yeah, we could look at the difference between delinquencies. I, I don't know that it was that much more. We did have, we've, we've had a lot more, we had a lot more bio solids expenditures than we have budgeted for.
Like three times what we planned, huh? Like three times what we planned, huh?
Yeah, it was a lot. More than.
But yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if that, I think that, that she has done, Jill has done some tweaking of the system to help reduce that cost, too. I think that was why they bought that de-watering pump and a couple other issues. So hopefully they can bring that back in line. And there, there was a few, a few necessary extra cleanings that needed to occur to get the system back running better than it had been. So that's, hopefully, won't be such a, a huge difference from our budget next year, but right now, we need to just determine how we're going to finish out this year.
Yeah, and it really does, it, it takes nothing to do a transfer. So if you want to just like play it by year and authorize me to cover expenses by transferring out of the savings, we can do that and just do it as, on an as-needed basis, rather than, say, taking a chunk and moving it from one account to another. I meant to look up what the differences in interest rates, but I don't think there is one, to be honest. I think they're both the same. So it, it doesn't really make a huge difference where it sits.
So then probably the right thing to do would be to move what you need for this month and next month. If you need to move more, we'll, we'll deal with it at the meetings as, as it goes along, right? Is that? Would that be your, your feeling, Julie?
Yeah, because I don't, I honestly just don't have a handle on what it's going to be like after we start. Because yeah, we're going into a new fiscal year, but that money isn't coming in immediately. So I think we're going to be looking at multiple transfers anyways, just because I don't have a handle on how much we're going to need. So it makes, and since it doesn't matter, it's not like it changes what our interest rate is going to be or anything. We may as well just do that. Unless you.
Does somebody want to make a motion for Julie to transfer what she needs to cover the expenses for this month and for this, for this particular warrant, I guess is the right term, Julie?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure. This is Jessica. I'll move that we, that Julie makes that transfer to cover the warrants for this period.
At the wastewater?
Yeah.
Okay, do I hear a second on that motion?
Mike, this is Bob. I'll second that.
Okay, Bob seconds that motion. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, Mike, this is Rich. I guess my question is, Jessica referred to that, the grant money that, that we could put towards that. What's the timeframe on potentially getting that money?
Um, this is Jessica. I can, I can answer that. I've been keeping, I've been keeping up with the, with news coming out on that, on those funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and the state has gotten further guidance on it, but hasn't yet determined exactly how much each town is going to get. So as soon as they determine that, we'll be able to apply for it. The timetable still is that we would get those funds sometime in June. So I guess they're going to try to move quickly once they know how much we're going to get. I also would like to remind everyone that those funds, besides being used for a budget shortfall due to COVID, those funds can absolutely be used for anything wastewater. That's one of the, that's one of the things on the list. So if we did need to make some sort of upgrade to the facility to make it stop having these bio solids issues in the future, that would definitely be an extremely legitimate use of the funds. Oh, and to, to completely answer Rich's question, the funds that would be released to us in June of this year are half, 50% of what our total funds would be. So they would release the other 50% in June of 2022. That's all the information I have.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor? Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved to move the money necessary to, to meet the bills for this month. Julie, thank you.
And I do, it is probably wise to have a bigger, longer conversation about this when we're setting rates, and perhaps we can work with RCAP. I don't remember the, what the acronym stands for, but that group that I was, that came and spoke with me a couple of times about our wastewater budgeting. So it may be maybe that would be a great opportunity for us to funnel some of that in, into figuring, some of those funds into figuring out how we can have a long-term fix to the continuing budget shortfalls.
Okay.
Um, let's see. Uh, the rest of my memo is just a friendly reminder to wastewater users that the final installment is due on 6/10. Anything after 6/10 is going to be delinquent and will be subject to penalty and interest. The Dropbox is still available for check and money order payments. Cash payments, I would prefer people give me a jingle and set up a time to come and drop that off. And then I have, I have an Excel file that, where I've compiled all of the expenses that I have to date on the Hurson property. Right now, my total is $14,443.95. That does not include any expenses, obviously, that have not happened yet, such as anything that we would have to pay for advertising for bids or an auction or anything of that sort. And I haven't done a deep dive where I've gone through all of my files and made sure I have everything in that Excel file. So I, I want to do that before we use that concrete number. And then I also had questions about this specific to the wastewater. I know there are a couple of emergency calls. Were any of those at that property?
No. No, one of them was at the very last house on the system. And the other one was right down on New Street.
Okay.
That's where those two blocks had just occurred.
And then I know that was going to be capped off, right, the connection to that trailer? I don't know if that is an additional expense, because I have not put additional expenses from VTOMs on.
Well, that was something, Clarence just put a cap on it when he was.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all taken care of.
Okay. Okay, that was all I had then.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the warrants?
Mike, this is Rich, and I'll make a motion to approve the warrants.
Okay, Rich, do I hear a second on the warrants?
Donald, second.
Okay, John, second the warrants. Any more discussion? All in favor? Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, warrants approved. Any more questions for Julie?
John has a question about the Hurson property. Do we have to do a title search for that? Is it our responsibility? And is there any way to estimate closing costs, legal and otherwise, that we might have that would be part of our value?
I don't know. I know title searches are definitely subject to mortgages, but if someone was paying cash, I don't think that there's a requirement for them to perform a title search unless they chose to. But it wouldn't be our responsibility, I don't think, to do that.
Okay.
I'm not. I, I don't remember having any of those expenses when we sold the stock property in West Polat Village here, but John Thrasher handled all of that. So I don't remember, it's probably five years ago or so now, but it's, it's possible there was, there was some information in the files from when that all, all changed hands. If we had to do any of that other stuff, or, or I'm sure Kevin would be able to shed a little bit of light on it, exactly what, what would be necessary and what, what costs we would incur in the course of the property changing hands. Any other, any other questions? Okay.
I did just, this is Julie again. I did say, I think I sent all of you an email with some more continuation on the Vermont League of Cities and Towns financial questionnaire that we had started many moons.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I was thinking that we would pick that up, not at this meeting, because I didn't get it to you in a timely fashion, but we could pick that up the, the next meeting if there is time.
Okay. Chris, Kristen, could you put that under older unfinished business, maybe? Would that be the best spot for that? Good. Thank you, Kristen. And then we'll, we'll review it.
Do you want it under Julie? This is Kristen, under the treasurer's memo department or older unfinished business?
I guess it could probably go right under the treasurer's business.
Okay. I will add that.
Okay, anything else for Julie? Thank you, Julie. Emergency management director's report.
Not sure if, um, if Bob.
I see it says Nancy Morlino, but maybe that's Bob.
Right.
Nope, it's Nancy, and Bob is out of town, so.
Okay.
I have nothing to report.
Hi, Nancy. I have, I have some reports from Bob that I'd be happy to share. This is Kristen. The emergency management director's report for May of 2021. He discussed the COVID-19 vaccine clinic. So same information as I discussed earlier during the announcements. Again, it's happening on June 11th at the Polat Fire Department from seven, uh, four to seven PM. COVID-19 updates continue to be posted daily to the Facebook page to keep residents informed, and Bob participated in two COVID-19 conference calls this month with Vermont Emergency Management and other emergency entities. And that culminates the emergency management director's report. If there were no questions and it was all right, I could roll right into the health officer's report if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay, so for May of 2021, Bob prepared two animal bite reports, confirmed bank-owned property had sealed waste line, had correspondence with the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation and Vermont Department of Natural Resources regarding potential illicit discharge from residents to storm drain. This will be the last monthly report from Bob Morlino. It has been an honor to serve the Polit community for the last nine years in this capacity. Jennifer Sullivan will be nominated by the select board to be the Vermont Department of Health to replace Mr. Morlino. And that is all from Bob. So thank you to Bob for wonderful service.
Okay.
Welcome.
So now the, the next step will be for the select board. Jennifer Sullivan and Bob have spoken, and Jennifer is willing to take over the, the health officer position. Jennifer has a RN degree, so she's quite qualified, and she's got all the details from Bob. Is there anything that you wish to say, Jennifer, at this point?
Bob has very generously offered to train me and be my mentor with, you know, any questions or anything, for which I'm very grateful, and I will definitely call on him. And I am looking forward to serving the town of Polat.
Okay. Excellent. We're very happy about this. Now, the next thing we need is official motion to appoint to, now it's not a point, it's to recommend. Kristen, do you have that application form handy there? I, I don't know if I can find it.
I don't, I don't have it right on the top or right here, but I believe nominate is what the board needs to nominate and make a recommendation.
Okay. And then, then we, we submit the recommendation, and then Bob prepared a, a letter from his conversation with Jennifer that explained Jennifer's qualifications and her, her willingness to fulfill this office. And I, I would like to, I'd like to have somebody make a, a motion that we nominate Jennifer to the health, or the, to the State of Vermont Health Board to be our next health officer.
I'll do that. This is Jessica. I, I move that we recommend and nominate Jennifer Sullivan to be our next health officer.
Excellent. Do I hear a second on that?
Mike, this is Bob. I'll second that.
Bob second that motion. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Excellent. Approved. Thank you, Jennifer, for stepping up and taking on this role. And now the rest is just kind of paperwork through the state. John, you have a question?
I have a question. I think it'd be appropriate for the select board to officially or formally or however you want to say it, Kristen can make up a letter thanking Bob for his many years as health officer. It's, it's, it's not a, a high prestige job, and he did it with skill and, and compassion and whatever else was needed at the time.
I, I agree. I think that would be a, a great, a great thing, a letter of, of thanks from the select board. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yeah, it looks that way. So Kristen, if you wouldn't mind taking care of that? Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Wastewater. I haven't talked to Jill. I see there's a little bit of stuff. We got a, a report that's come. Oh, Kristen has some information?
Yes, this is Kristen. So Jill Marsano of Vermont Utility Management Services, I think. Is it services or systems? I can never quite remember.
We'll go with services.
Services, I believe. So that acronym is VTOMs for, for us acronym lovers, so that's what VTOMs means. She submitted the 2020 Annual Phosphorus Report on behalf of the town and the wastewater treatment facility, and I did not receive, to my inbox, a confirmation of it, but I was included on the submitting, the submission of it. Also, something came to the select board email address, and it was from, I think it was the Agency of Natural Resources, and it's the town's wastewater facility operational permit, which is coming due, and it's due on June 30th of 2021, and the total amount due is $200. So I forwarded that email along to Julie, Mike, and Jill, just so that you guys all had the opportunity to see that. Jill did just respond a little while ago and said that she's not personally seen these messages, but the, the online portal is real. She can confirm the online payment portal is real, and if the town needs any help getting that paid, she's helped, happy to work together on that. So just wanted to, that's all I had in terms of wastewater business.
That's good.
Mike, Mike, this is Rich. I did have a chance to catch up with Jill, and in regards to the sludge and, and where we're going to store it and just how, what we're going to do to get it out of the system so it doesn't just keep recreating a problem. And she has asked Bill Nuss, who is the vice president of Engineering Ventures in Burlington, to give us a proposal for the cost of oh, looking at the structural integrity of those walls where they proposed to put the Uh, looking at the structural integrity of those walls where they proposed to put the, the sludge vessel. Um, so that's. I mean, that's, uh, that's going to show us how many gallons of sludge we could use in that vessel, depending on, you know, what the engineering cost is going to cost us before we decide to do that. And she, so that's, we're not going to spend any money there until he gives us a proposal for what it will cost to, to do that. And she said on a good note, um, all the levels are, uh, are passing. And we're only at 16% of our permitted limits for phosphorus. So, um, and the average daily flows are about 7,000 gallons. So she's, she's really happy with how that the plan is working right now. And, uh, you know, hopefully we can come up with a solution for the sludge and, and get that out of the system.
All right. Sounds good, Rich. Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions about the wastewater treatment facility? Okay. Older unfinished business. Yes, the first thing on our plate is the diversity inclusivity statement. Jessica, you were going to reach out to be L C T, which you did. Could you, uh, do you have that letter handy or do your response?
I could get it handy just quickly. One second. Let me get it on my phone. All right, here it is. So I emailed Vermont League of Cities and Towns and they forwarded my. They forwarded my question, which was the, the question that was posed last time. The, is there anything about this statement that would be, uh, would increase our liability? Because they're the folks who do our insurance and basically let them have a look at it. And they forwarded to one of the insurance people whose name is Fred Satink. And he wrote back, "We appreciate you reaching out with this question as it is important for all members to consider liability risks associated with actions and even statements." "After reviewing the proposed statement below, that would come from the Polit Select Board, it is my recommendation that you remove the word 'safe.'" "While it may be well-intended, we feel that adding the word would make it easier for plaintiffs' counsel to make allegations against the town, thus increasing the potential for suits and likely making any claim or suit more difficult to defend. We fully support the town's instant intentions with regard to the statement itself, however. Suggest that simply removing the word 'safe' from the statement reduces liability risk while still conveying the boards and communities' intentions. With regard to coverage related to this issue, there is coverage subject to the agreement's conditions, definitions and exclusions of the coverage documents." So that's what we heard from them. So sounds like they say it's a go as far as they're concerned with the insurance, just that the word "safe" might be better removed.
Okay. And, uh, we also reached out to, uh, our attorney Merrill Bat and, and she said that she felt that there was nothing in the statement. I, I don't particularly, I, I had an answer from her. Uh. Um, no, I'm not putting. Let me see. She said that, uh. Okay. Uh, I think that the statement is fine as for the concerns that are separately forwarded to me. I think that it does come down to, uh. To whether the Select Board is comfortable with the statement as the members of the board are representatives of the town at large. For that reason, I don't think the language needs to be changed to the people of Polit, nor do I think that the statement expands the obligations of individual citizens. Rather, it's intended to be positive affirmation of shared values. If the Select Board feels that it constitutes shared, that its constituents share the values expressed in the statement. Then it is appropriate to adopt it. I do think it's worth having another round of comments on the statement. But it would be a limited length of time people could have the comment publicly. As, uh, we have discussed before. Let me know if you want any follow-up, Merrill. So. It appears that, that, uh. Everyone that's evaluated the statement can find no reason why, uh, why not to adopt it. So.
Um, this is Jessica. John, since you're the one who wrote the statement, would you be all right with the removal of the word "safe"?
Uh, I'm disappointed. I think the word "safe" is important there, but I also, uh. Understand insurance people and, uh, they're in the business of selling coverage, but they also, uh. Protect us, uh, with our policies. So I'm okay with removing that one word so that the last. Sentence would be, "Together we share a commitment and a responsibility for everyone in our town to be honored and valued."
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding that statement as it's been? Uh. The word "safe" has been removed for our, from our advice from our insurance League of Cities and Towns. Okay. Julie Mack has a hand up.
Hi, this is Julie. Um, I think. I really liked the word "safe" in that, um, statement as well, John. And I think. That sometimes it has to come down to. Well, willingness to accept some risk. And the great, and weighing the risk versus the reward. And I think that having, um, a statement that indicates to people that we as a community are committed to. Um, people from all walks of life feeling safe is worth the very limited potential risk. And I would. I personally would advise that you leave it in because I'm okay with that limited risk. That's just my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, so what does the board want to do next?
John will make the motion to, for the town of Polit to accept this. On the behalf of the town of Polit, to accept this statement of inclusion without the word "safe."
This is Jessica. I second John's motion.
Jessica made, uh, John made a motion, Jessica seconded. Is there any more discussion? Okay. How do you vote, John? In favor?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. It's unanimous that passed. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work.
Thank you.
Um, this is Jessica. I'm wondering if this statement will now be posted on our website? And if so, what part of the website it should be on?
I do, I don't, I don't know what the most appropriate portion of the website for it to be on. I. Whenever I look at the website, I, I have a specific. Um. Place in mind where I'm going, so I don't, I, I don't look at it from just, uh, an outward perspective. What would you think?
Well, let me look at it this moment here. I'm going to see how it looks on a phone, because that's how most people will be looking at it these days. I know we have an area called Documents, but I'm not sure anyone really looks at that. Let's see. On the main page, it does have a "Welcome to the Town of Polit, Vermont," and it tells about what our town is like. Perhaps on that main page right below it, we might put the statement as it is sort of a welcoming statement. Um, then it also has below that, it's like news, like about the vaccine clinic. Checking. Um. Yeah, I'm not seeing anywhere else where it would necessarily go, except perhaps under government documents. But it's not really a policy, so I don't think it would go under Documents.
Kristen?
This is Kristen. I just, um, speaking to support that within the "Welcome to the Town of Polit" section. Um, I think that it seems like an appropriate place, you know, as it is a, a statement. About our town. Um, the other thing that I wanted to offer was that I could talk to Sean Ruck, who's our web coordinator and see if. If he might have any recommendations in terms of layout, what might, what might be an appropriate place. Um, and I'd be happy to do that and, and let you all know. And if he also says that he thinks the welcome portion is appropriate, we could just go ahead and do that. That was all from me. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments here? It, it does seem to me like it, it should be right there during, as, as tied in with the welcome statement too, I would say.
So if you'd like, I can go ahead and contact Sean about that.
Everybody on the board in favor of adding that right in the front page of the, of our website? Do we need to, uh? We voted on this policy. Do we need to, uh, vote to put it on the website? Or is the consensus good enough with everybody? I'm guessing that we can just go with a consensus then. Okay. Thanks, everyone, for all your hard work on that. Very delicate, uh, issue that, that, uh, we've dealt with. Frank?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, the response from the lawyer and the email that Jessica read out. Should be printed out and attached to the insurance policy. Just for the record and also the exact wording of both be added to the minutes as, as a suggestion, um, just for the record-keeping. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Is there any other, uh, Kristen?
Just wanting to follow up, um, since it was pertaining to the minutes. So, uh, the plan is, or my, my plan was that I've, uh, typed out the adopted statement, which will go into the minutes. Um, per the previous policies and discussions that the board has had, I don't think, again, it's an appropriate place to copy and paste. Anything from an email, um, or quote from an email necessarily to the minutes. Um, but I just want to make sure that I'm hearing everything from the board.
It's important that we can, can keep all this information somewhere around file that it pertains to it, but it doesn't. I don't feel that it necessarily has to be attached in with the minutes of the meeting itself.
Okay. Maybe if, um, if Jessica, if you want, I have the email from. The V L C T that was, I was included on, but maybe Mike, if you want to send me. The message from Merrill and I can just make a working document and save that electronically and have that as a backed up electronic file.
Okay, certainly.
Okay.
Hello again.
Right.
Okay, just as a, a matter of process in the insurance office, we would have discussions with underwriters. Similar to what Jessica's discussion was with, uh, Vermont League of Cities and Towns Insurance Representative. And we would have a phone conversation and oftentimes follow up, have them send a paper, uh, letter following up. Uh, the discussion, which the email would be doing with, that Jessica read. Uh, and we would, as a matter of policy, would attach that into the customer's file in the front of the file typically. Uh. If there was ever a question that came up in the future, that. We would have the record of the underwriter's actual statement in writing. Uh. Which puts the insurance company on the hook if they try to wiggle off a hook more than not. Uh, on some areas, because not everything's black and white in some cases. And that's why we would talk to an underwriter is to clarify. So just to, um, follow up that there should be several places and one place would be wherever the insurance records are kept. Uh, relative to a, a communication about insurance. It should be kept with the policy in a file. Um, of itself, basically stipulating communications with the insurance company. Uh, not exact, because you have renewals year after year, but this is going to be ongoing. So you would typically have a file that would. Say, okay, this is our communication records with the company stipulating some sort of underwriting response. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Kristen, can you make that, uh, message to Deb and see how we can include it in our, uh, in our standard, uh. Uh, filing system so that we can keep all this information, pertinent information together with the statement, please?
Yep. This is Kristen. Absolutely. I'll, I'm going to compile a electronic file on my computer that has. As much as I can wrangle in terms of different, you know, everybody's statements and whatnot. I'll put it all together and then I'll include Deb on it and make sure that I have it backed up and that she can. Store it wherever she, um, stores it on her end. So we should be covered. So thank you, Frank, for the suggestions.
Okay. Is there any more older unfinished business?
Mike, this is Rich and, uh, I should have brought it up when Keith was talking, but in regards to the video we all got that Dave Hosley sent to the Select Board. With the stormwater issue. I met with Keith, uh, I met with Keith this morning down there. And, uh, we discussed, uh, a couple possible solutions, uh. To take care of the majority of that, that water. Um, so we can continue to, to, uh, discuss that and figure out how to put that in motion.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll keep that on Keith. Can you, uh, mark that down to ask, talk with him about it at the next meeting, please, Kristen? Thank you. Yeah, we got him, we got the same video last year too from Dave. So.
Okay.
Certainly need to deal with it. It, it runs down that whole, that whole stretch of the road there pretty hard. So.
It is, as long as the bedrock's not two feet under the ground, it looks like it's a pretty simple solution.
That, that will be, that will be questionable down there.
Right.
Um. Mike, I have.
Kristen?
I, this is Kristen. Um, one other unfinished business item. So, um. So Brooke Hughes, you guys, the board had approved the use for Brooke to do yoga classes upstairs in the auditorium. And so I have been communicating with her, just making sure that she's aware of the town hall mask requirements. And she is just looking for a little bit of clarification on what has, what pertains to the auditorium portion. Um, she's just wondering, and I've, I've expressed to her everything that Deb has expressed. But hoping that the board might be able to discuss this, just so that I can be clear with how I communicate back to her. She said things such as, um, you know, wondering if, confirming that people who are vaccinated, if they don't have to practice yoga with a mask on, she would be happy to enforce a. Mask to your mat thing. Um, but she's just feeling like perhaps people won't want to be practicing yoga with masks on. And so she just, and she's happy to respect whatever the policies are, but is just looking for a little bit more guidance. Um, so I'm not sure. I said that we're kind of at the mercy of, of what the governor says and it's all, you know, as it has been for the last. Year plus, there's a lot of evolving, moving parts. But anyway, yeah, just hoping for a little bit of discussion or guidance from, from you all.
Does anybody have any, any comments on that? I haven't followed the. Does anybody have any any comments on that? I haven't followed the, as of late, the the governor's rules. It seems to be if you're vaccinated, there's different different rules, so. But I don't know.
This is Jessica. I have kind of kept up with the the press conferences that the governor does. I believe that the current guidance is that people who are fully vaccinated, that's two weeks out from their final shot, are not required to wear masks in indoor settings unless the building requires it. You know, the like the person who owns the shop has a sign that says that still masks are required. But folks who are unvaccinated, which unfortunately still includes kids under 12, who are not, don't have a vaccine available to them, are still required to wear masks in in the indoor settings. That that may change soon because, yeah, it may change within a week, but as of right now, I believe that is still the guidance.
And as of right now, Deb is still requiring everybody to use to wear masks as they come into the.
Okay, Mike, that's correct, just due to the fact that not everybody working out of the town hall, either not everybody has been fully vaccinated and or people who are in their homes might not be or have some you know, health concerns preventing them from doing so. So basically, I guess I just wanted to confirm that the town hall, the town office mask protocol extends to the auditorium.
I would say yes.
Assume yes, but I just wanted to, okay, so that's fine. I will just let Brooke know that as it stands now, that is the is the protocol. So masks are required in the building still, and as updates happen, we'll, I'll be sure to keep her posted. So, okay, so thank you. And then the only other older unfinished item was the review of the ethics policy that came up the last meeting. So in terms of Maureen had brought it up, it was about communication, I believe, and and ethics and what is open meeting law and things like that. And so I did want to share that I had forwarded this to the board. I had reached out to the VLCT. And trying to look for that. But in short, some a gentleman named Garrett Baxter got back to me about this. And in short, phone conversations are not a part of open meeting law, personal phone conversations, unless a phone conversation has been recorded, in which case I would assume that just out of kindness, both parties would be alerted if something was being recorded. So there is a robust and very kind of dense and convoluted overview of the open meeting law and the Public Records Act, and it's, I'm not an expert, so I don't feel that it's my place to to go over it with everybody. But in essence, everything is very situational. And while there might be some personally identifiable information, which is not a public record, a topic might be. So what the board and individuals involved have to be aware of is just doing their best to when sharing information via email or in a situation such as here at a meeting that's being reported, everybody just needs to be mindful to blur out or omit personally identifiable information. So when in a in a case of open meeting law and public records, you have to just be mindful to omit personally identifiable information, which in essence is anything that identifies you as being you. So for example, I could share that Jessica's favorite color might be orange, but I can't share Jessica's birth date. So there, you know, more examples about differences between personally identifiable information. So that's what I have to report on that. I know I forwarded this information to the board, so I don't know if anybody else has anything that might help to share that update. So, yeah.
I reviewed it too and stuff, and that's that's kind of what I gathered also, so.
So just friendly reminder for everybody, if you're, if anybody's ever unsure about what is safe and acceptable to be shared and whatnot, feel free to reach out to me and I can try to assist, but always I would recommend reaching out to the League of Cities and Towns. It's just their information email. It's it's so helpful, so.
So this is Maureen. Can I say something?
Go ahead, Maureen.
Um, so what my specific question is, is that and I guess I'm looking for clarification. I'm not looking just to understand open, like during the open meeting laws. What I'm looking to understand is when a community member speaks to a select board member as an official outside of those open meeting laws, does the pop town, does the Paulette Select Board feel that it's ethical for the select board member to share personal and identifying information regarding opinions of of that community member? A person who's on the select board has, you know, a place of more power, and I think that it's it would be wise, you know, the Paulette Select Board can develop its own policies regarding what they find to be ethical, and they can decide that when a community member speaks to a select board member, then it's the obligation of the select board member to not disclose identifying information when somebody is orally petitioning regarding a public and community issue. Because the select board members, a select board member having more clout than perhaps a community member, specifically, we're talking about equity, somebody who might be marginalized, you know, a member of a marginalized community isn't going to necessarily portray their concerns to a select board member if they don't feel that that is something that's going to be safe and that perhaps somebody might be misconstruing the information and spreading it to community members, which is what happened to me.
Um, this is Jessica. I have, it's not, it's not quite related to that, but I was wondering, do we as a select board have a social media policy at all? I mean, I remember us seeing a conflict of interest policy, but I don't recall seeing that we have either a specific ethics policy or a social media one. And I honestly have been wondering about social media policy, right? Because I because, you know, as having been elected to the select board, I now do feel that I'm perhaps held to a slightly higher standard. And I wonder if I wonder if any of the posts that I make on social media, which I hope aren't very inflammatory, but you know, sometimes you say things to your friends, I was have been kind of wondering if I ought to curtail those more or I I I've been curious about that, and I don't think that we have such a policy. And I'm wondering if it's something that we may want to pursue as a board to just consider if there is, if we would want to have an ethics or social media policy.
I I don't know. This is this is certainly uncharted territory for anything that I've ever experienced in my in my terms and stuff like that. And there's, in my experience, there's never been any kind of implied that you were in confidence when you were speaking to the select board member, but I don't ever recall anybody putting anything out there that that would be somehow detrimental to the persons that was trying to bring up any subject either. So.
This is Maureen. That is exactly what happened to me. So I think that to prevent it from happening in the future, it would be wise for the select board to develop some type of policy where.
Well, yeah. Okay, that's something we can work on, but most of the things that the select board deals with isn't of that nature. So I I just don't know. I mean, it's it's no different than just saying anything anywhere. I I really don't. I I I'm quite, quite, I quite don't understand. You know, when you, when you have a something you say to the select board, it's it's something that they'll share with others to to discuss so that they they can come up with a informative decision on for the town. So that's my opinion.
But a person's name doesn't need to be included in that conversation and their identifying information regarding a, you know, an opinion that somebody has.
Well, quite often, a person's name makes a lot of difference behind the opinion to me. So that's that's just my stance, so. Kristen, you have a hand up?
This is Kristen. Yeah, so just a quick, so I mean, I I can reach out about the social media policy, Jessica, because I do think it it couldn't hurt to see if there's something that's out there. And then just in general, I mean, a general reminder about the select board is that it's it's individuals with individual opinions who are appointed and elected to be on or elected and appointed to be on the select board, but ultimately those opinions are sort of are put to the side, and the select board as a group serves to serve the community and make choices on behalf of the community. So I think while personal opinions are are personal opinions, that is one of the main lines in the select board is that the role of the select board is to ultimately all personal opinions aside to serve and do it as best for the town. So that just popped up as a reminder in my mind, Jessica, when you were talking about sharing personal thoughts. But I think in an interest of time, just because we do, just to be the time police here, we do have a couple more things on the agenda. And but I would be happy to reach out and check my sources to see if there's any additional information and support, because like what Mike said, I know that this is this is new, it's important, and but it just needs more research and consideration, it seems.
Frank, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Mike, thank you quickly. In a business sense, an official sense, one of the things that's encouraged these days are special liability insurance policies for web exposures, which there's a whole list of them. I'm not going to go through now. One of them is copyright. You don't know if you if something gets put on our website, because we're publishers. When we have a website, we're publishing. If somebody else on the internet scans, you know, goes, has a search and search mechanism by which they search the internet for something that they've copyrighted, you could get a letter saying you owe us this much money for violation of copyright. Okay, so there's an insurance policy for that, and and somebody needs to be on guard on on that. So there's, I don't know what the League of City of Towns policy is in regards to how much coverage we have for operating the website and covering all the aspects of what a typical insurance policy would cover for somebody operating a website and doing it properly and being covered for that. The issue at hand regarding the social media and a policy, I think, is that individuals are responsible for their own lives and what they put up for social media and have their own exposure potentially from a liability perspective, depending acting in an official capacity from the select board. That's another story, but individuals would have political fallout if they post things that are incongruent to the constituents' positions and lose the election the next time around. So that's the risk there. However, we should, it should be looked into with the League of Cities and Towns on if they have a social media policy or something, because this wouldn't be the first time this is covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kristen, what's next?
Sorry, my mute unmute button was hard to find there for a second. So next up is new business, of which there was none requested to be on the agenda. I'm not sure if board members have new business. And if there's not any new business, not to jump ahead, there is the executive session.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to deal with next.
So so this is Kristen. So for Jessica and Rich, this will be the first executive session that has happened. So an executive session is an opportunity for the board to meet without the presence of the public to review information that falls with on within and under it, then the umbrella set out by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. In this instance, sorry, gotta scroll. Let's see. So in this instance, it's to discuss employee labor relations agreements, which has been brought up to the attention of the board. So there needs to be a motion made in order to go into executive session. And pending the approval of the motion, what will happen is the recording of this meeting will be paused. All attendees who are not members of the select board will be relocated into the waiting room. So we'll make sure that everybody goes into the waiting room. The select board will have the opportunity to discuss this item. However, no decisions are allowed to be made within executive session. When the board is done, the recording will be going on again. Everybody will be welcome back in. The board will make the motion to exit executive session, and then conversation will ensue. And if any decisions need to be made, that will be discussed again in the public meeting format. So that all being said. Mike?
Okay, somebody want to make a motion that we go into executive session for discussion of person personnel issues?
And employee labor relations agreements.
Okay.
Mike, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bob made the motion. Do they have a second?
Don will second.
Don will second it. Okay. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go into executive session. Kristen will.
Okay, so bear with me, everybody. I am going to put in the waiting room. Usually, when we're not in Brady Bunch boxes, we go into the town clerk's office, or you guys go in, you all go into the town clerk's office. Okay. Okay, so now I am, we have everybody. Okay, I am going to pause the.
Okay, Bob Jones made a motion to exit executive session seconded by Jessica Van Orte.
Okay, I am going to admit.
All are in favor.
Great, so everybody's coming back in. Press. So everybody is back in the meeting room. So meeting, the meeting has resumed.
Okay. What else have we got for new business? Nothing, right? We're on public, we're, that was at the end of new business, and we're on to public comment, right?
Yep. And just so everybody else knows, so the meeting is being recorded again, and Mr. Beecher shared that the board, there was a motion made by Bob Jones to exit executive session with no decisions made at 8:51 PM, and that motion was seconded by Jessica Van Orte. There is no discussion, and the result was approved.
Okay, public comment. Frank, do you have your hand up, or did you?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mike. Since Julie's still here, we can ask her. When Julie, does the subscription have to be renewed for the Zoom accounts? And should we all move on this planning commission and the DRB onto the same account as the select board at this time, or when would be the time we'd have to decide by? Thank you.
Okay, Julie, do you have any idea when those accounts come due?
The select board account is paid monthly. The Paulette Planning Commission was a year, and I don't remember when it was done. It should be coming up for renewal. I think Jessica's been locked out of it, and I've been locked out of it, and I need to get together sometime with Harry when he can, because it was set up under his email. And we just can't get in, and I can't make any changes to it or discontinue it until we are able to figure out with Harry how we can get in.
So Frank's Frank's opinion, question was, can we, can we lump these all together so that we have one one Zoom account? Or how does that all work? Does it? Or how does that all work, does it run out of time?
Just, I think you would just cancel. The subscription or not renew when it comes up and just keep the one account.
Okay. Kristen?
This is Kristen, my only comment on that as the, as a user of the account is, I think. I don't think any meetings ever happen at the same time, which is the only issue. The other main issue is the storage space for the meeting recording. Um, so there's, personally for these select word meetings, I store the meetings on the cloud so that it doesn't, because I'm. I utilize a personal computer to do this, to do the Zoom portion, and then I type everything on my town computer. So that way I don't store the meetings to my personal computer, I store them to the cloud, and it, cloud storage is limited. I do upload all of the meetings and save them to the town's computer and then upload them to Peg TV. But there has been some shared usage, like the Board of Abatement. Um, Deb has used this account that the select board uses. And so there just would need to be some carefully orchestrated accountability for the uploading and then deletion of meeting recordings. I think that would be the only thing, um, so.
So how much of the accounts monthly, basically, or?
This is Julie, are you asking how much we spend a month on it?
Yeah, approximately, just some.
About sixteen dollars.
Per account, or?
Yeah.
Oh. Uh, just, just to me, it seems like it's a lot cleaner if everybody has their own account for less than twenty bucks a month.
I think that, this is Kristen, I think that if there's a, the, the planning commission account isn't being used by Harry. That one should probably, and nobody's using that, it makes sense to figure out how to cancel that one. And then Jessica, I think that it makes sense if you would like to use this town account, so that way you're not using a personal account or something.
Right, yeah, because right now I am using my personal account since I got locked out of the planning commission one.
Yeah, so I would be, I think that that would make sense, but just my personal opinion on it all is that. I don't think we'll be on Zoom forever in this capacity. Um, and I think that it would make sense to have a town account for when there's a hybridized model, but I feel that. It might get a little, for less than twenty dollars a month, it might make sense for the DRB to maintain doing it the way they've been doing it. And then perhaps jet, the planning commission can get in on this account. That's just my thought for ease.
Um, okay, Keith, Keith has got a question.
Uh, just a comment, Mike, really, um, the DRB, John Weiss usually hosts a meeting for us, so he uses the Polit Fire Department account. Because he's, he's familiar with it, so we don't have a special account for the DRB. It's just, uh, he just, John hosts the meeting and he does it on the Polit Fire Department account, so.
So then I'm wondering if, if perhaps, until we get a better hybridized version, maybe the town should have its own account. And the, the planning commission, we should get that account open, and then the planning commission, since they only hold one meeting a month. Could share theirs with the DRB, which kind of goes hand in hand. Maybe, and that would keep storage available for the town business.
I think the DRB is using the fire departments.
Right, but if, if for, I think we need to get, somebody needs to get with Harry Van Meter and get the, the other, the one that's purchased for the planning commission back open again. So if the DRB needs one, they could use that one also. But then that way, we're not, because the DR, the planning commission only has one meeting a month, where the select board has two meetings a month. So it'd be less, less load on the account, if, if we had two accounts. I mean, to me, for twenty bucks, it doesn't seem, or sixteen dollars, or whatever it is, it doesn't seem like it's worth putting a lot of effort into getting. Getting one big account where everybody's got to make sure they're not bumping into each other.
I, I would be happy to contact Harry and coordinate with Julie on that, um, or I don't know if Julie even needs to be involved. I can contact Harry and see if we can get into the. The account that he opened, and then we can at least go from there.
Okay, that would be excellent, thank you. Okay, what else do we have for public comment tonight?
This is Frank again, Mike.
I gotta let everybody else talk first, Frank.
Okay.
Does anybody else want, any, anybody else have any public comment tonight? Think. All right, well then you get to talk twice, then Frank, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I was looking at that account issue from another point of view, is the user point of view, where if there was just one Zoom number. For town meeting day, for the select board, for the planning commission, for DRB, it would be. Because if you're from a user perspective and you have all these different accounts in there, you, with Zoom, you're opening them up. Whereas if it was town of Polit, boom, and just like using the meeting room over in the town hall. The planning commission was never in there at the same time as the DRB or, or the select board. Uh, so it'd be a similar pro- program as that with a simple, simplistic, more simple usage for the users. Uh, to just have that one account, uh, number that they were utilizing as opposed to guessing which one they went in on. Number one, that's no, number one. Num- number two is that the planning commission's using a Dropbox that Jessica also is managing to hold digital documents. So people can go in and out, including the public, and pull down drafts of planning commission progress. On different documents, et cetera, and reference documents. And the town may want to, as part of its website program, it, it works like an FTP server. Is to have its own Dropbox, uh, that could be, select board, could be planning commission. Could be DRB, where people who want the additional information could go to that and, and be able to draw it off, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything for public comment? Nine oh one. Who wants to make the move?
I will, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you very much, Jessica, do I have a second on Jessica's?
Mike, this is Rich, I'll second that.
Rich seconded, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, thank you all for coming, have a great evening.
Night, everybody.